Not four o'clock, we're gonna stop anyway. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Coffee County Planning Commission on April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five to order. I would like to, before we approve the agenda, I would like to change places with the resolution amendment by Garcia Groves. Let's put it down after the minor final, map oh-four-two, before the building setback discussion. You'll have a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, I will take a motion to approve the new agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Randy seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we'll move right along to public comments.
May I start? I want to introduce Amanda Harrington with RCS Planners, is that correct? She's from Dixon, Tennessee. I've signed a retainer with her for her services regarding planning and zoning issues. She's a professional in her field and she's been an independent voice regarding zoning and land use issues moving forward.
Welcome.
Thank you, glad to be here.
As far as public comments are concerned, we have had two or three pretty good meetings. I think everybody's got to say whatever they wanted to say. If you have any new public comments, please come forward. We want you to come to the podium, speak into the microphone. So, anyone out there? Yes?
I would like to speak. I don't know what you want to do now, later, when you consider his resolution.
No, come right now.
Tell them to do it different today.
Yeah, we're doing it a little different, Doc. We're gonna have, we're not gonna have a lot of back and forth tonight.
Okay.
I might, I got two minutes?
You got two, now, it is an item on the agenda, correct?
What?
What you're speaking of is an item on-
It's associated, it's associated with that, yes.
Okay.
Yep, okay. So, I, my name is Kevin Sype. I live out in Hillsborough, Tennessee. For in regards to full disclosure, I've sat in your position there on the Planning Commission before. Actually, I was part of when the original resolution was drafted for zoning in the county. I was a county commissioner at that time and I currently am on the Board of Zoning Appeals. But I'm actually just speaking as a person from the public, you know, on this particular issue. And it really has to do with the major subdivision regulations. And as you all know, I'm not gonna try to reduplicate. There's been so much good information presented to you amongst all the participants in the audience and on the Planning Commission. But I really had just a suggested resolution from my experience on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And this only has to do with the A-one area. And what my resolution, which I gave copies here to the chairman that you can review at a later date, is, is to, to make a major subdivision a conditional use in an A-one and then have requirements for what that does. Now, if you look currently in there, there's actually listed twenty-five conditional uses that we deal with all the time. And this would just be another one, which has specific requirements that the Board of Zoning Appeals would actually look at to determine if it was appropriate to put there. You could look at this as a concession to maybe some other things you're considering or you could look at it as an all branch of trying to make a place where we can all come together. I think the one thing from talking to both sides, I have not find anybody that thinks that you should be able to build any subdivision of any size in any part of A-one. I've not found that on either side. And that's kinda like what we have right now. So, we need some kind of a change, you know, in there. And this is just something for you all to consider, you know, not that you'd vote on it, but just in the future to look at. The mayor has seen this, the codes department head has seen this, and this has been through an attorney also. And actually, I wrote this because back when I was on the county commission, we wrote our own resolutions. You know, that wasn't something that was done by an attorney. We did it ourselves. So, that's what I'm presenting to you. So, if you had a chance to look at it, you have any questions or you can talk to me later. But that's what I wanted to give you.
Yes?
I'd like to speak.
Yes. You're speaking about something on the agenda tonight, correct?
I am.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Ashley Gunn. After the last meeting and the call for supporting data, I did some research. I would like to note that providing the data requested is complicated by the fact that the information is not archived in a way that would allow someone to pull that based on the criteria that was discussed. But I did learn of one instance where a structure fire was called, where a structure fire caused damage to a neighboring house. Damage occurred following a structure fire on Blackberry Lane. Call was paged out while the Hillsborough Volunteer Fire Department was actually at the fire hall for a monthly training, so they were able to initiate response immediately, which is sooner than they would normally have, than they would normally be able to respond. When they arrived at the fire, the vinyl siding on the two neighboring houses had already begun to melt. Thankfully, they were able to protect the structures and prevent further damage and put out the original fire they were paged out to. This occurred in a subdivision that was built prior to the reduced setbacks. Looking at past data, does not indicate what can or may happen in the future. We haven't lived with the reduced setbacks long enough to realize the potential impacts. The real question is not what has happened in the past, but what may happen in the future. Now's the time to evaluate the impact large subdivisions and other proposed growth has on our community. Regarding fire protection specifically, I want to share with you some information I found. Rules of TDEC Division of Water Resources on Public Water Systems, Section seventeen, states all water mains designed for fire protection must be six inches or larger and be able to provide five hundred gallons per minute with twenty pounds per square inch residual pressure. Fire hydrants shall not be installed on water mains less than six inches in diameter or on water mains that cannot produce five hundred GPM or twenty PSI residual pressure unless the tops are painted red. Fire hydrants with tops painted red, Class C hydrants, cannot be connected directly to a pump or fire truck. Fire departments may be allowed to fill the booster tanks on any fire apparatus from an available hydrant by using the water systems available pressure only. This means that fire departments cannot hook, cannot pump directly from these red top fire hydrants. They have to shuttle water from the fire hydrant to the scene, which delays response, requires more resources, has an impact. In an article published by the, by the Municipal Technical Advisory Service, which is a organization through the University of Tennessee, in twenty-twenty-three, they state, although municipal governments in Tennessee are responsible for providing fire service, utility districts that struggle to provide water for consumption often think they are not responsible for fire service. They may not or do not recognize that forty percent of a community's insurance service organization or ISO rating, which is used to set local property insurance rates, is based on the water utility system. The ISO rating for a community is based half on the fire department and almost half on the water service. Cities should not approve new development projects unless there is sufficient water available to provide the needed fire flows.
Wrap it up as fast as you can.
Okay. Says deficient water for fire protection should be grounds for rejection of proposed developments. So, currently, ISO, it's a rating for fire departments, ten-class system, ten being the worst. Volunteer fire departments in the county, with the exception of one, are all scored at a six. By comparison, Manchester's a three. MTS estimates a thirty-five percent savings on insurance costs for a Class Six area over a Class Ten. This has a direct impact on our citizens. Can somebody else donate time?
I guess.
Thank you. Has a direct impact on our citizens. Insurance companies can also deny coverage to people in areas with high ISO scores. In twenty-twenty, when the volunteer fire departments last reevaluated, lasted their ISO, fifteen of the thirty-three fire hydrants in the Hillsborough Fire Jurisdiction met the five hundred GPM below requirements. The remainder were below. That means they're red top fire hydrants. Hillsborough's fire jurisdiction covers one hundred and thirteen square miles. Water supplies in rural area was obviously intended for consumption, not for fire protection. It's underscored in the county codes, which clearly implement different water line size requirements for the rural areas versus PGA and UGB. Water lines in rural areas are allowed to be less than six inches, whereas in the PGA and UGB, they are required to be six or greater. It's also underlined in the requirements for fire hydrants. It actually specifically states that while fire protection is to be provided to all developments within the county, the level of fire protection is intended to be higher in the PGA's and UGB's as compared to the RAs. This clearly indicates to me that when these rules and regulations were written, the growth that we're seeing in rural areas was not anticipated. Responsible growth has to address infrastructure concerns in these areas to ensure larger developments do not overwhelm existing infrastructure, negatively impacting current, future residents, and possibly creating whole communities with unmet basic needs that they're paying for in terms of water and taxes. Responsible growth also has to reflect the differences between rural areas and those areas designated as PGA and UGB.
Thank you.
Yep.
Perfect.
Close.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We're not gonna be able to talk on each agenda item as they come up like we have been, right?
No. If, if, have you got something that's on the agenda or is this something that's, that you think's gonna be on, is it, what you're talking about gonna be on, is on the agenda tonight?
Minor final map ground.
That's not the same one?
It's not the same one?
Correct, Cindy.
Haskell went and rode.
This one is on Haskell went and rode.
You're good. Or the setbacks.
Do what?
Setbacks are on there, right?
Setbacks are on there. We're gonna discuss them a little bit later. You got something to say about setbacks?
Not to add to the conversation.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes?
I just asked a quick question. We came up here, we live five hundred feet from the city limits on the old Manchester Highway. Are y'all trying to put us into city limits?
No, sir. I don't know where you got that idea.
We got a call today and we just said we need to come to this meeting because of-
No, that's, that's some, there's been a lot of that going around.
Who called you?
Yeah, who did call you?
Name?
We got a call, we got a call from one of our neighbors.
Manchester was last night.
Was in Tohoma, did he?
Are you, are you, do you live outside the city limits of Manchester?
We live outside the city limits of Tohoma.
So, I, that would be who-
That's what I'm concerned about.
The Tohoma's Planning Commission has approved a rezoning of a piece of property on the New Manchester Highway, close to the cemetery-
Yeah.
-where the old drive-in used to be. That is not before, it will not come before this planning commission ever.
Okay, so we're not, we're not, we're not here because we-
If you got an issue about Tohoma, it's not tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we're gonna go ahead with our items on the agenda then. We got approved the previous minutes and we have two sets of minutes to approve. Let's go with the March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve them?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve the March twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five minutes. Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a second from Ms. Laura. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to the minutes from April first.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Have a motion for Ms. Laura to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Randy seconds? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is the site plan, map zero-sixty-six HA parcel eight-zero-one-eight Brenly. Someone here to represent that? Come right up, please, sir.
I'm sorry?
Come right up.
Oh.
People, people at home want to, people at home want to see.
This is, we've got, from Kenny.
Yes.
And it shows. And the detention there. So Kenny Sadler developed this site plan for Mr. Brenly.
Kenny's having surgery, so-
Would you please recognize yourself, introduce yourself.
Rick Brenly. We own the property there. But, yeah, Kenny's, Kenny's doing the development. We're looking at storage units. Planning to go with climate controlled. I've told, I've talked with several of the neighbors to let them know what's going on. We're planning to put a privacy fence, six-foot-high privacy fence, all the way around the property to minimize any intrusion. I've told them I'd put a lock on the gate. We'd lock it at ten o'clock every night and open it back up at six o'clock in the morning so there's no traffic during the evening hours. To my knowledge, I've not had any objections so far, so.
Staff recommended approval, correct? Y'all here, staff recommends approving this. Any questions? You'll have a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion for Ms. Laura to approve. You'll have a second.
I'll second.
Randy's going to second that. Any more discussion?
I feel like I shouldn't vote.
Do what?
I feel like I shouldn't vote.
That's my fault, that's my son-in-law.
So, I don't feel, I'm gonna sustain.
You poor asshole, you.
I get that comment a lot.
Yeah, I can't believe you-
You just said that in public.
I'm gonna sustain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is site plan, map oh-nine-five parcel oh-four-eight point-three-five. This is Mr. Deal?
Eric Deal.
This is what Kenny gave me in three years.
Yeah, so basically, it's just, it's in the industrial park. It's warehousing and industrial property.
Which industrial park?
Volunteer Park, off of Volunteer Parkway. Yeah. So, it's our proposal to put these in. We have a couple people looking for that size product right now, so that's what we wanna do.
And you had a little, you had a little item that you were supposed to get to Cindy and she said she got it?
No, they've gotta come back. The industrial park has to, we got a kind of a verbal approval, but they, they're gonna have, have to meet, so.
Is it gonna be on the eighth?
Yeah, they're supposed to be on the eighth.
Man, that's all we needed. So, everything, everything's been satisfied on this, with the exception of-
Yes.
-an industrial board? If the staff is good with this, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion for Ms. Laura to approve? You can do this, Rodney.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Duncan. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
This is a minor final, map zero-sixty-six, parcel zero-zero-nine-point-zero-zero ground. So, we did have to, sorry, girls.
I had to remind him we have two Lauras on the Planning Commission.
But we don't have one that's voting, right? We're good.
She's a, she, what are we doing to?
We're on the ground, yeah, we're on the ground. Quiet.
I represent, uh-
Oh, okay.
Is it up there yet?
No. This is the property, it's right there. And this is-
Haskell went and rode, yeah.
Okay, I'm Garcia Groves, representing Nick Graham on this. Mr. Northcutt couldn't be here today. However, I believe this is for the final, final approval on this minor subdivision and to my knowledge, everything's been done accordingly.
Mandy's here for Luke's office.
Oh, great, sorry.
That's why I was confused.
I don't know if you-
That's okay. I'm Mandy from Northcutt and Associates. It's a three-lot minor. All punchless items have been addressed. I'm here if you have any questions.
Kirk said, Kirk said, staff approved. The staff has approved this. You got it right there.
And it has state signature soils.
Yeah, the, the final pad is complete.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion for Ms. Laura Nellis to approve.
I'll second it.
I didn't see you say it.
I did, same, yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next thing on our agenda is the minor final, map zero-four-two parcel oh-two-four-point-oh-two, Sane.
Should've just stayed up here. The Saints are taking two small lots and absorbing them into a larger tract.
Those two small tracks on the bottom are gonna go with the big track, the rectangle on the left.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Randy Harrow makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Motion to second.
Mr. Duncan makes a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, we are moving on to where we have some fun now. Mitch Segrows, you're up.
Good afternoon, Garcia Groves, Tohoma, represent a group of individuals in Coffee County that are impacted by moratorium and also with proposed resolutions that are coming forth before this committee, before they move on to the full county commission. Last meeting here, I submitted one resolution and it has since been divided into three separate resolutions. And I believe that was for economy and also ease of understanding what we're requesting. We're here today to present these again and request a vote on, from this Planning Commission, either up or down on this, so we can proceed from, from that point forward. Just start with Resolution One at this point. This has to do with water and fire protection. These are actually two separate issues that have been combined in one resolution. In a situation where the current county requirements are met, one has water service that's been approved by utility and it's one mile from a functioning hydrant. A major subdivision may have lot sizes of point-eight acres with one-hundred-foot lot width. If not that, if you have water service and you do not have a hydrant or fire flow within a mile, then you can have an acre lot with a hundred-and-twenty-five-foot width. And if you have neither, water or fire flow, a two-acre minimum with a hundred-and-fifty-foot wa, lot width. That's what we're presenting today for this Planning Commission and requesting a vote on that.
Go one at a time?
Every, how you wanna do it.
All right. Any comments on this? On number one?
So, it doesn't say anything about the developer increasing the line or anything going to the subdivision or?
No, and the reason behind that is to the fact that, from my understanding, that if a water utility cannot provide the water, that's found out at some point in time and that would kill the subdivision, which has been done before in the past.
So, if the, you're saying if the water, if they increase the line size, the water, the utility can't provide it?
I'm saying if the current water supply can manage a proposed subdivision, then that would be sufficient. If the water utility says that it can't, then it would be upon the developer at that point in time to determine whether or not it was, it's worth handling that situation or not, to meet the standards that would be set forth to supply water.
Definition of a functioning hydrant?
I believe it's, you know, a hydrant that can produce, what is it, five hundred gallons that, it's-
That's, that's fire protection.
Fire protection, that's what we're talking about, fire flow, fire protection.
Fire flow.
Well, that's not in here. I mean, that, in this, you say a functioning-
Well, the, 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 the current, the way it reads currently, if I'm not mistaken, you have to have fire flow from a fire hydrant, functioning fire hydrant, correct?
At a, at a, at a level.
At a level, and it has to be within one mile from the subdivision. And that's, and, and, and that's for Section A. And if there's not one within a mile, and the mile is by linear feet by road, it's not, as the crow flies. But if it's not fire flow, then it increases to a one-acre lot with a hundred-and-twenty-five-foot width.
And on your widths?
That's a lot.
These are minimum widths, okay?
Yes, yes.
That needs to be in there.
Well, we can put that in there.
That needs to be in there.
Minimum width, we can do- Minimum width, we can do that.
Did you, did you ask to speak?
No. I was going.
I like the way it's written in our book. I mean, we've got the same, basically the same thing already in the, in the resolution.
Correct.
Okay. I like the way ours is written better than I like the way this.
Well, and we can make those minimum changes in regards to, uh, what's in the book now.
Like you were talking about, it says functioning hydrant.
Well, how's it reading the book right now, if you don't mind me asking? In regards to a fire hydrant.
I'll read it, 'cause I got it right. Minimum fire flow. For purposes of this resolution, the term minimum fire flow shall mean a five hundred gallon per minute water flow calculated at twenty pounds per square inch residual pressure delivered from a water line that is six inches or greater in diameter.
Right, and that would be to the fire hydrant itself, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yes. So instead of functioning hydrant, can we put that in place of the functioning?
Your language is already present, correct?
Right.
Right. Well, I would, I would propose that we, that I, um...
I mean, I don't know why you would need a resolution for this when it's already there.
Well, because I would like to put this forward before the county commission, and I'd like to know if you would vote it up or down or vote, vote in favor of it, if it read verbatim as it was just stated.
With all due respect, it's already in our resolution.
Well, then, is there an issue?
I mean, this is our resolution.
Is there a issue with...
It's already there.
So there's, I mean, are you not, are you gonna vote on it or not? I mean...
Can we confirm that it's already in the book? You know, I mean, we could do that, but...
Do you, can you, I would...
Like I say, I like the way ours is written better than this one. Ours has stood the test of time.
And it specifies the fire flow too.
I'm more than willing at this point in time to, um, edit this, to read as it states there. And what, and what I'm getting at is, we have to get something before the full commission, and we want the full commission to understand what's on the books at this point in time, and if this committee does not agree with what's on the books, then vote this down and let us take this in front, in front of the full commission.
We do this book every day.
I know, but there's also lots of talk about changing this.
Well, that's, that's certainly a possibility, but I don't think anybody's gonna change the fire flow at all.
No, no.
I mean, we're talking about more water, you know, that we'd like to have more water, not that we, that we go the other direction, you know? Uh, and, and, and to me, when you say a hundred foot lot width and not minimum a hundred foot lot width, we're talking two different things.
Well, and that could be...
It could be, it, it can be...
It could be a maximum or minimum.
So it needs to specify a minimum in it.
And we can put that in there.
Any other, any discussions down the table down there? Sammy, you're, you're in the water business, or, I know you wouldn't like to be right now, but you are.
Chair. Can I say something? So you're saying a minimum a hundred foot wide?
Minimum.
So if you're gonna put a sixty foot house on there, you're gonna have twenty foot setbacks on each side, is that correct?
Unless you make that lot wide, that's why it's a hundred foot minimum. And that's all that's good for that. That's in the book.
Yeah, that needs to be chipped at too, at some points, because you can't put a sixty foot house on it and have twenty, even if you had kept a twenty-five foot setbacks, you can't put a sixty foot wide house on it, or sixty foot long.
Agreed.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Is this for A1, UGA, BGA? What's this for?
This will be for A1. It will be for A1, and it...
Garth, once again, with all due respect, we already have book reg- regulations for all districts. It's already here.
I get that.
And it says, minimum lot width is a hundred and twenty-five feet.
For which one?
All of them.
All of them.
All districts. With sewer, you can go to a hundred feet existing, 'cause the language is already here.
What we're proposing is what we're requesting to be voted on. Now, once it gets to the full county commission, whether it's voted up or down here, and I hope before then that we can have a meeting of the minds and talk, which is something that we have not done yet as a group, and that was one of the reasons for this moratorium, is so everyone could talk. And we have had individuals speak with some of the gentlemen in this crowd, and I think it went fairly well. Um, but at this stage, we're trying to get an up and down vote on each of these resolutions where it can be discussed before the full county commission.
I may have lost some words, because we already have, this has already been adopted by the full county commission. Uh, this is, you're, you're proposing redundant language, right?
Everything that's on the books right now is not, is not necessarily null and void, but it's not applicable 'cause of the moratorium. And that's why we're trying to get something in front of the full county commission right now to have a discussion.
There will be something in front of the full county commission that will end the moratorium at our very next meeting.
Okay, so, I'm requesting there be a vote on resolution one, and there's...
Can I read something here just real quick that I've got? This came straight from a, uh, AWWA. Water utilities and fire hydrants provide fire protection. These hydrants are crucial components of water distribution systems that ensure firefighters have immediate access to a reliable water supply. Also, I've got a bunch of other stuff, but, also I found this today that I thought was real interesting. Uh, this is from West Warren Utility. Water infrastructure in Coffee County, Tennessee includes the construction of a five hundred thousand gallon water tank within the Beech Grove community and the replacement of an aged two hundred thousand gallon elevated water tank. The Coffee County Water Tower provides water and fire protection. So they're planning on, so I mean, the utilities are trying to help with fire protection. And I, you know, you're talking about small utilities here and stuff, and I just say, you know, you know, we're still looking at, um... I, I believe that, I believe that new subdivisions need to have some kind of, developers need to help out and also kinda provide some kind of fire protection. I know if the developers pay for it and it's gonna go increase the houses, but if you take a subdivision that's got fire protection and a subdivision that does not have any fire protection, I'd be willing to pay a little extra to know my family's safe and also to save some on my fire insurance.
I think what we need to do is, Mr. Segrows wants a vote on this. Uh, I'll entertain a motion either way.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to decline it.
I have a motion to decline it. Do I have a second?
'Cause like you said, we've already got it in there to begin with.
I need a second or not?
I'll second, just because it's, if it's already in there.
I have a motion and a second to decline the, to give this a, a negative rating, a negative, uh, uh... All those in favor of this resolution, to decline this resolution, say aye. All those in favor of this resolution? The resolution failed. Okay, going on to the next.
Next resolution, roads, um, this is again in A1. If a road, if you're affronting...
Just a second.
Yes, sir, sorry.
I do want to, can't speak for everybody.
Yes, sir.
I'm speaking for me. That's already in the book.
I understand.
It's already been voted on, so...
I get you, I understand. Not, not a problem.
Good effort on your part.
No, I, I expected it.
Resolution number two.
Resolution number two. Um, this is A1 regarding roads. If you're affronting on a road that does not have a fifty foot right of way, then the developer can be asked to dedicate, or a public use easement can be put in place to ensure the county has twenty-five feet from the center of the roadway. B, a traffic study would be performed by a licensed traffic study, um, engineer to ensure that the roadway can handle the traffic for any major subdivision of fifteen lots or more.
Now, the twenty-five foot, is that just on that subdivision side, or is that...
It has to be, I don't believe we can go to the property over across the street to enforce that.
So you're talking about, they say it's, the road's eighteen foot, so then you're gonna go twenty-five foot more?
It's gonna be, to ensure the county has twenty-five feet from the center.
Okay, okay. I see what you're saying.
An additional twenty-five feet on the side.
Okay, okay.
Twenty-five feet from the center. And the road study is, I know there's a lot of concerns about traffic, and that would be one way to ensure...
The planning commission can ask for, ask for a, a traffic study at any, at any time. That's our prerogative.
We're just wanting to put it on paper, just to, just to try to, try to meet somewhere in the middle.
The traffic study is already in our subdivision regulations.
Is it for, is that for the county as well, or the city?
Uh, we only deal with counties.
I know that, I was just asking, I know the city, I did not, I, I didn't think it was involved for the county as well.
Regulations, subdivision regulations. I like, if I could, this is probably the one item that is what I consider a compromise.
Yeah, we're getting there.
This one is, yeah. It's, it, and as opposed to having a full fifty foot right of way restriction, you're saying twenty-five feet from the center of a road back to the side of the development, correct?
It's twenty-five, yes, twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet from the center.
The developer would relinquish whatever it took to get twenty-five foot from center length to his side of the road.
Correct.
And that would allow improvements underground utilities only along the area of the development, correct?
Yeah, we got to that point. And I would request to vote on that as well, denial or agreeing to vote on that resolution.
I would. On the, to handle any major subdivision of fifteen lots or more?
If I may explain, I, we, we felt anything with five lots is obviously a major subdivision.
Right, five or more.
But it, five or more, but doing fifteen, we felt was, it, it might be cost prohibitive if it's just five lots on, on one street, but if it's gonna be fifteen lots, that we came up with in regards to, would be a proper amount of, uh, lots in order to justify having that done.
Any discussion down the hall? I'll entertain a motion either way.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
You got a motion?
Wait, he's got a motion on the floor, he has to wait just a second for discussion. Sorry.
Did I get a second? Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this?
I've got a question. Where it says fifteen lots or more, is that gonna change our language as far as what's considered a major subdivision?
No.
No.
I wouldn't think it would.
That was not our intention.
TCA, actually, CTA.
Good question, I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, any more discussion? I have a motion, the second that we approve resolution number two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you. And resolution three, this is regarding setbacks, and I know there's gonna be discussion about this later, um, this evening. If you'd like to come back to this after that discussion...
I want, I want to clear one thing up though, okay? Your, your A, I believe is, is because the planning commission just recently voting on this issue at Mayor Hunt's request. It wasn't Mayor Hunt that requested that.
Oh.
Let's, let's make sure.
Well, we'll, we'll fix that.
I don't wanna throw him under the bus, but...
I hate to hurt the bus. But yeah, we can come back after that if you like. If that's a group...
I would like to make, with all due respect, these, these are presented in a format that is basically ideas.
And I have a, I have a proper, already, it's already drafted?
With a therefore's and a whereas is, okay?
Already got it.
Thank you, sir.
We have had the stoning resolutions in two thousand and one, and the setbacks were changed a year and a half ago. It used to be fifty, fifty, fifty in the A1 areas. Uh, I know Rodney said, find me a house that's caught another one on fire. Might be because we had a hundred feet between houses all that time. Uh, is, is Sammy Morton here? Sammy has a little information on that, I'd like for him to speak, and I'll give you a chance to speak then, after that Rodney, if you'd like. Is that okay?
Are we still doing public comments?
This is specific information for the setbacks, okay?
I'm also gonna request, uh, my assistant chief Dylan Harris to come up. He can probably speak on this also. Um, I'm Sammy Morton, chief of New Union Fire Department. I'm here to represent all the rural fire departments of Coffee County. There are five fire departments here. Approximately four years ago, we had a structural fire on Blackberry Lane, Hillsborough Fire Department. I think their response time was six minutes. Um, if I'm correct on that, Ashley, where'd she go? Uh, was that correct?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't pull to that bar.
Okay, but their response time was very quick. The house next door, the siding burned off of it and part of the roof. And several years ago, I can't remember the exact date, right behind New Union Fire Department, we had a house catch on fire. Our response time was five and a half minutes. We burnt the siding off the next house. The people never woke up. All I'm worried about is safety. The people that was next door never woke up because their smoke detectors did not go off because the fire was on the outside of the house. I'm worried about if we get them too close together, that we have fires jump from house to house. Dylan Harris here is assistant chief from New Union. He's also a Murfreesboro fireman, and, um, he's got a house that he wants to tell you about, and, uh, he's got more, he's my data man, I'll just be honest. Um, but I'm gonna let him speak here right quick, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Good evening. As you said, my name's Dylan Harris. I'm the assistant chief in the Union Fire Department. I've been volunteering for going on fourteen years now, career fire department, fireman for going on ten. Um, response times in the county, I... Response times in the county, I went back two years countywide that I could get data on through our reports and whatnot. The average response time for structured fires in the county to have, for the closest fire department to have the first truck on scene is an average of 14 minutes and one second. And, you know, that's a, that's a pretty good long, um, time. But, um, with that being in mind, the average flashover time from the time a fire goes from a small incipient stage fire to fully involved, coming out the roof, coming out the windows, is three to five minutes nationally averaging in a modern family dwelling. And so with that being said, our rural county fire departments at 14 minutes, yeah, it's a good response for a volunteer fire department. We're having to leave our work, leave our families, get to the station, respond to who knows where in the county. So need to keep that in mind that by the time we get there, most of these houses have already gone to fully combustion and they're fully involved and going to the next house or spreading past their own, um, origin. As Sammy said, you know, we've had a couple in, um, New Union, one of us actually, our firefighter, one of our firemen captains, um, his garage caught on fire and, um, his house was approximately 40-foot from the garage and the whole siding of his house got melted off from this fire. And on that particular fire, we were on scene in seven minutes. From the time he come over the radio and said his garage is on fire to the time the first truck pulled on scene was seven minutes. And so that was half of our average time and we still couldn't stop it. And with that being said, being a fireman in Murfreesboro, a few weeks ago, we, um, we got dispatched to a structured fire and my particular engine was about a half a mile away from this incident. We were en route in 36 seconds and due to the traffic in Murfreesboro and stuff, we, from the time we got dispatched and to on scene was two minutes and 47 seconds. And at that time, we fire had already started on the backside of the house and was through the roof of the house. And we were inside the door within one minute of being on scene with the hose line flowing water with a four-man crew with a thousand GPM pump, or thousand gallons on the truck and a water supply established. And it still burnt the roof off the house and burnt the siding off the house next door to it that was approximately 60-foot away. And, um, that's with three suppression units, two rescue's, four chiefs, approximately 35 personnel on scene within 10 minutes of a fully blown structure fire. And, you know, that's, that's an ISO one, um, rated department, yes.
They also have fire hydrants over 500 feet.
That is correct. It is a standard in the city.
Fire hydrant, which I know Murfreesboro, a lot of theirs are blue tops.
Yes, sir.
So you're looking at a minimum of 1,500 gallons per minute.
Yes, sir.
And it still did that damage.
Yes, sir. And I have pictures on my phone. I was trying, I was gonna try to get them where we could put them up here, but we didn't get that. Um, if anybody would like to see those, um, yes, I mean, we had, our fire hydrant was roughly 350-foot away. And, um, we had, you know, units on scene within, like I said, under three minutes before supposed flashover time. And our crew was able to make a search of that house to make sure everybody was out. But after that, our hose line was ineffective of containing that fire. We had to back, back out to run aerial operation, which is flowing, we were flowing about 1,500 gallons a minute at that time to contain that fire to keep it from spreading to the neighbor's house, so.
And one, one other question. I know I read an article that stated that in the last 20 years, 20 years ago, the average time for a fire to actually spread was approximately 10 to 15 minutes.
That is correct.
Now, with everything that is designed in houses now and all the way it's manufactured, that time has gone to
Three to five.
Three to five minutes.
Yes, sir. This, I actually have this article from the US Fire Administration. Says, "Public awareness is common fire risk is cr- critical to saving lives and drastically reducing property loss. The public needs to understand that today's structured fires can go from a small flame to flashover in just three to five minutes, leaving little time for escape. Uh, the rapid progression is due to the number of contributing factors, including synthetic materials used in modern furnitures and interior finishes, along with lithium ion batteries and increasing in household ba-, you know, units." So everything we have has a lithium battery in it and y'all have seen late car fires. So, you know, we, in the last, you know, 10 years even, it's gone a quarter of what it was back when a lot of people had started the volunteer departments.
One other question now, be quiet.
No, you're fine.
How long would it take y'all to approximately go a mile to a fire hydrant, fill up and then come back?
So at a fire hydrant, say it's flowing 500 gallons a minute. So our tankers hold roughly to anywhere from 1,500 to 2,000 gallons a minute. So you're looking at, you know, three to four minutes alone of the hydrant being fully flowed. And most of the time, we only fill up with a two and a half hose because that's just what we have and that's, this connects direct to the hydrant. A mile down the road, I mean, you're talking yeah, 10 to 15 minutes for one truck.
Okay, so that's twice the length of time
Yes, sir.
that it would take for a house to be engulfed.
Yes, sir.
I mean.
And that's if you, no traffic and everything, everything goes good.
That's if you have a way in and out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, anybody can go on, I know YouTube is not a great source, but you can go into Underwriters Laboratories and look up this information and they set the standards nationwide. You can look these up. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not, it's common knowledge in the fire world. So, um, Mr. Chairman, you have any other questions?
Any questions?
I just had to say, I, my hats are off to y'all.
Well, thank you.
Volunteer fire departments and stuff, so.
Let him go.
I mean, I, y'all do a great job, in my opinion, and put your life on the line and I think there could be more done to help protect y'all, just like y'all protect us.
Well, safety for the people that are buying the houses is what I'm worried about. When a smoke detector does not go off when the siding is being melted, it don't go off till smoke enters the residence. Well, if the roof's gotta be falling in for that smoke to get inside the house, the people are gone. And you can blare sirens, you can, some people just don't wake up to noise. And any other questions?
Nope. Appreciate your information.
Thank you.
So I hear a lot about vinyl siding. I can see some compromises here. You could require houses be built out of brick that are less than 100 feet. Cause I, all I've heard is melted vinyl siding and I've seen a lot of melted vinyl siding, so. Houses under 100 feet apart have to be built out of brick between the houses. That's one compromise. I got another one. If they want those setbacks, let's just make it an A1. All A1 setbacks are 50, 50, 50, but the other, the other zones are 25, 25, 25. When the last meeting, somebody said, is this for A1? And somebody said, no, it's for all of them, so.
I think in our book it's, it's different.
If we wanna do this in A1, but anything, or, or you could do brick houses, anything under 100 feet and then you don't have melted vinyl siding.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I, I would ask that you consider the, the vinyl windows, the vinyl sopit, the asphalt chain with the roof. And I would also, I'm having a little tough time understanding a man who didn't want to take my property rights and now he's gonna tell me how to have to build my house out of bricks.
Well, you said fire safety, so I'm, brick's fire safety.
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to say that our bulk requirements are for all districts, so your idea of making it A1 only is a great idea in my book. But our bulk requirements are for all districts. Right now, front is 50, side, uh, let's see, we got side is 20 on quarter acre. These, these are for sewer. I mean, we don't have sewer in the county.
No, that's not.
So it's irrelevant. But we do have one acre, we have 50 front, 50 rear, 25 side. That's the current bulk requirements. If you got a two-acre lot, then it's 50, 50, 50, but that's all districts. So definitely that going with the A1 only.
Obviously, A1 has the hardest trouble with fire protection.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
Right, that's a good, can we make a motion to do, like he said, 50, 50 on A1 only?
I make a motion, we go 50, 50, 50 in the A1 ag.
Only.
Only for the setbacks.
That's his motion. A1 doesn't matter what.
Fire safety, no wonder what size lot it is and if it needs to be 50, 50, 50 for safety, A1 would be 50, 50, 50.
Any more discussion on that? At the table here?
Yeah.
At the, the, do I have a second? Did I get a second?
I'll second.
I can count Randy for a second. Any more discussion? Read that motion, send it.
We go to setbacks as 50 feet in the front, 50 feet all the way around on both sides in the rear and all the A1 areas, no matter lot size.
Everybody understand? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Then it gives the other closer to town, they're not spreading houses out 100 feet apart.
Anybody, anything else? Anybody got something they want to say? Because if we don't, we're going to that yard right here.
That's Sammy's favorite part.
I would like to say at our next full commission meeting, the, the resolution to amend our zoning resolution had three distinct issues that will be separated at our next meeting.
I do have one thing. I, I do have one more thing. Obviously Anastasia's proved that four o'clock's pretty early, especially for some of us that work and stuff. And we did have it at five and then some of us missed and they changed it back to four. I would really like to move the board meetings, or these meetings back to five o'clock. Not just for those of us that work other jobs, but for the citizens that work other jobs that need to come to these meetings.
You're making a motion?
I'm making a motion to move the meetings to five.
Have a second somewhere? Motion does relax for a second.
Alright.
Rodney, would you like to have a motion to adjourn now?
That's Sammy's job. Sammy sends us home every.
I can make that motion. Setbacks.
I'm sorry about that. You're alright. And we might be able to clarify this pretty quick. So what was this voted on today? What Rodney presented, 50, 50 and 50.
In the A1.
In the A1, only A1. Is that something that is going to be presented to the full commission at the next meeting? Or is it gonna be waited to be grouped together and put in play all at once?
The next full commission?
Yeah, we don't have time, you know?
48 hours, as long as I get the agenda out, 48 hours prior to the meeting.
No public hearing on that?
Uh, that is amended. You're gonna have, we're gonna have multiple amendments, it appears. Yours got passed, right?
Well, one did.
The second one.
And we still have the third one to discuss, but my concern is if we could come back at the next planning commission meeting and bring forth another, another amendment to that and, and it might give another avenue on the setback issue.
I'm gonna ask our newly hired professional planner, if we have multiple zoning resolution amendments, does one public hearing cover all of them?
If it's, if it's advertised for all three.
Okay. And that is 15 days prior to the meeting though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Which meeting we talking about? We're talking about the?
I don't think we're gonna be able to get none of them that's worked on tonight, cause our meeting is the 13th, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I believe it's the 13th. Yeah, it probably don't have time to get the public hearing. Uh, the only thing, the only thing that'll be on the next agenda is the, uh, amendment to the zoning resolution that was postponed at our last meeting, which already did have a public hearing. So that's the only one we can actually address in our next full commission.
And that's the 13th?
I believe it's the 13th.
Of May?
It's the 13th.
Thank you.
And that's the full county commission, right?
Yes.
And we have to in, in our newspaper, there's no way of getting it in the newspaper 15 days prior, is there, Mr. Newspaper Man?
So if you're gonna run it in three, you gotta wait three weeks to write it.
Okay.
Well, as it stands, in regards to the timing on this, um, for resolution number three that, that I presented on behalf of some people, it would be essentially to keep the setbacks as they are. And this is essentially like the first resolution, which I know you're gonna have an issue with, this is already in the, in, in the books. But I would propose that, um, you give us an up and down vote on that at this point in time. Resolution three, this on the backside.
I make a motion to, uh, disapprove mo- resolution three, cause we've already made a setback motion that we've already passed and we don't need two.
Your, your motion is what Rodney?
To, to, to vote now, decline mo- resolution three.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to decline resolution three. Any other discussion? All those in favor to decline resolution three, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Pretty good. That worked.
Alright, Sammy, do your thing.
I'm ready. I'm ready to make a motion to adjourn.
I second it. Everybody ready to go home? Say aye.
Is there any possible? Well, you, we can't get to the next full commission meeting anyway.
Right.
But if you wait till our next commission.
Just gonna be another month after that. I will give y'all a call tomorrow, next day, we'll pass through this time. Probably tomorrow.
Alright, did we hear yet?
We have mostly remained, vote, they voted.